I'd like to call on Board Member Bill Gobel to open our meeting. Thank you. We are now at our, um, just a minute, these here. We'll begin tonight's meeting by remembering two students who passed away last school year. Although we celebrate their lives and the positive impact they made on the Guilford County School family, our hearts are extended in grief to their loved ones. On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to extend our deepest condolences to the families, friends, and teachers of Omarion McCoy and Arianna Fountain.
Omarion Jalen McCoy was a young man full of life who had a deep passion for friends, family, and completing high school. His life was cut too short, just two months shy of this goal of his graduation from the A&amp;T Four Middle College at North Carolina A&amp;T State University. Omarion will be most remembered for his strong sense of fashion, for his love for the game of basketball, and for the dedication that he showed to each of his awesome and beloved friends. Although he will be missed, the impression that he made on everyone will most certainly be remembered.
Despite her brief time at Grimsley High, Arianna Fountain made a profound impact on the hearts of those around her. Her warm and courageous nature never failed to impress, and her radiant and effervescent personality had the power to uplift any room she entered. The void left by her absence at Grimsley High School is something that will be felt forever. We will forever long for her courageous, contagious positivity that brought joy to the hallways and brightened the spirits of everyone fortunate enough to know her.
To know these students for a brief amount of time, in their own ways, they helped to create heartwarming memories that will be cherished forever. To honor these students, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we would like to invite any family members, any school representatives, to come forward to receive condolences from the Board of Education. Next, we will recognize our July Employee of the Month, Monti Kimber. Will you please come to the podium? Her colleagues call her "team too much" for her willingness to help anyone with any issue. Now they can call Monti Kimber Office Support for the Transportation Department Employee of the Month. Monti helps both school and district staff and parents with their transportation challenges and says her years of experience as a bus driver helped her solve problems more effectively. Monti was nominated by music teacher Lily Alman Harris, who wrote, "The very first interaction that I had with Ms. Kimber was in the summer of 2018 when I had a supervisory position with the Summer Arts Institute. She has always been responsive and helpful. The following summer, I returned in a supervisory position with the Fine Arts for the Ignite Summer Program. There were quite a few fires to put out that summer, and she offered the support that was needed from the Transportation Department to resolve these issues. She doesn't hide behind emails and returns your calls and emails within the same or next day. She is always kind and understanding when she communicates orally or through email. She diligently works to find timely solutions to issues. Ms. Kimber has been and continues to be an asset to transportation. I believe that our school district should recognize her for her diligent and dedicated service." Monti received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s, and during the month of July, your photo will be displayed here at the district's central offices and in the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Diane Bellamy Small to read aloud the certificate honoring Monti.
First, I have a message from Ms. Harris, who could not be here today. She wanted you to know that, folks need to know that whenever there's a need for a bus driver, you go out and still drive buses. And that you saved her students twice, once when a chorus was supposed to be at the ACC Women's Tournament, and then for their all chorus, you made those two things happen. And so she also wanted you to know she appreciated your support in her becoming a CDL for non-yellow bus driver.
Yes.
So I wanted to make, you know, this is the reason that we should be doing all that we can to support getting classified employees more money.
Most definitely.
Well, you heard it. From Guilford County School, County Board of Education, Certificate of Recognition, Presented to Monti Kimber, Transportation for Employee of the Month, sponsored by the Greensboro J.C., July 2023, signed by Superintendent Whitney Oakley and Board Chair Deana Hayes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You need to tell us that we can do better for you. Okay?
You can do better for us, because we're better together. I am so honored to be named Employee of the Month. My, I've been here 17 years, and my planned, my planned prayer is that I can continue to be team too much for GCS for the next 13 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, Monti, we would like to not only shake your hand, but any friends or family members or school representatives that are here, we'd like to also congratulate them. Thank you. We are now at public comments. We'd just like to remind our speakers, we only have three people who have signed up. As we call your name, we ask you to come to the podium. It'll have three minutes to speak. We ask you to give your name and address. That will not count against your time. When the amber light comes on, you have about 15 seconds left. I'd like for you to wrap up your comments so that we are able to hear the next speaker. When the red light comes on, your time is up. Our first speaker for the evening is Margaret Rowlett, followed by Alexa Byrd. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Rowlett, 808 Twickenham Drive, and I'm a volunteer with the Greensboro Solar Power Now Coalition. We were so happy this past April when we learned about changes to the district's energy and resource conservation regulation. We were particularly pleased to see the change to the regulation that committed the district to make a good faith effort to transition to 100% clean energy. I'd like to express our thanks to Superintendent Oakley for authorizing this addition to the district's policies. Thank you also, Superintendent Oakley, for the additional sustainability goals added to the policy, including the commitment to designing new buildings to lead Silver certification standards as a minimum. We look forward to your annual reports as to the progress that the district makes toward its goals. Superintendent Oakley and members of the Board of Education, we have just one other thing that we ask of you with respect to your energy regulations. Please add a deadline to the goal for when you will transition to 100% clean energy. Specifically, we ask that you make the year 2050 the deadline for this transition. If it takes longer than that, it will have taken too long. Climate change and global warming are well underway. A headline in the News and Record just last Thursday read, "City Struggle to Make Plans for Extreme Heat." On Friday, the next day, another headline read, "Meteorologists Say Earth Hit Heat Record," referring to the global average temperature in June. Articles such as these are here to stay, and when we think about these global issues, our response needs to be to act locally. You can act locally by setting 2050 as the deadline for the district's clean energy transition. And now is the time to start laying out your strategy for reaching that goal. Decisions you're making now are impacting your chances of success. For example, when designing new schools, it's important you work to eliminate the burning of fossil fuels associated with them, including in school kitchens. According to a recent episode of the PBS show Nova, called Chasing Carbon Zero, burning natural gas in a kitchen is not only harmful to the environment, but it can also be harmful to human health when it creates pollutants that cause illnesses, including asthma. So burning fossil fuels, burning natural gas in schools, it's not just bad for the environment, but it's bad for the health of the people in the building. So please plan the new schools to operate with electricity and clean energy. That's just one example of the choices you can make now as you build schools that will be healthy and sustainable for the future. There are so many ways you can work toward the clean energy goal, but you need to decide to get there by 2050 and start making your plans now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexa Byrd, followed by our final speaker, Derek Mobley. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Alexa Byrd. I live at 324 Gorl Street. Hello, everyone. I'm a rising senior at Weaver Academy, where I'm a theater major and also a member of the Superintendent's Advisory Council. My school, along with many others, is scheduled to be rebuilt in the coming years since the passing of the school bond. I see this as a tremendous opportunity, and so should you. It is the perfect opportunity to commit to energy efficiency and sustainability. I want to thank you all for the commitment you made when you adopted the energy policy, but I urge you to commit to a deadline of 2050. This date has been determined and backed by climate scientists. It's imperative that you meet the demands of the climate policy by this date before we hit a turning point in our climate. Committing to a deadline will help ensure that sustainability measures drawn out in the energy policy will be met within a reasonable timeframe. I also recommend setting specific benchmark deadlines for specific goals within the energy policy. You should also look to other school systems that have already committed to similar policies and learn from how they have begun implementing changes. It is important that this policy is turned into action. All GCS schools must be healthy and safe for all students and teachers. I speak for many GCS students when I say that we are concerned about the climate crisis, and we all are watching to see how you will act on this energy policy. We want to see you follow through. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Derek Mobley. Welcome.
Hey, my name is Derek Mobley. I live at 6012 Crystal Spring Court, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27410. And this may be a little bit repetitive, so I will try to be brief. So I'm also, I'm a parent of a GCS student, and I'm here tonight in support of my friends with the Greensboro Solar Power Now Coalition. I addressed this body last December to encourage you to adopt the recommendations of the coalition as part of your update to Policy 6530. These recommendations included designing new buildings to lead Silver standards at a minimum, adopting a goal for 100% clean energy by 2050, and having the superintendent report annually on progress towards these goals. First, I want to thank you for thoughtfully addressing most of these concerns with the new policy. I'm confident that prioritizing sustainability and energy efficiency during new construction projects and during renovations will provide savings over the long term while also protecting the environment. Further, I want to encourage you to take the extra step to adopt a goal for clean energy by 2050. I understand that there are concerns with the feasibility and cost of reaching this goal and how it would affect the many other priorities we all share for GCS staff and students. However, I'm a strong believer in smart goals. For a goal to be smart, it must be specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-sensitive. The current policy and regulation meets four out of these five criteria, but something important is still missing. Finally, if there are concerns about the feasibility of this goal, I have two suggestions for you to consider. Prioritize filling the open position of energy engineer and make sure that person has the salary and standing to be effective in implementing the current policy and to provide advice on achieving the clean energy goal. If this is not feasible, consider partnering with Guilford County or the City of Greensboro's Office of Sustainability and Resilience to share resources and expertise. Remember, we're all in this together. And finally, Duke Energy, with the help of the North Carolina Legislature, has recently implemented the Green Source Advantage Program, which allows purchase power agreements for renewable energy for UNC institutions, large businesses, and the military. Given the large rooftop space for GCS and the fact that your energy needs are much lower in the middle of the summer, when residential needs are the highest, it's possible you could cover a great deal of the cost of your conversion to solar power by supplying it when it's most needed. School systems as large as GCS should be eligible for this program, and if they're not, you could include it as part of your legislative agenda. Thank you again for your time and for all that you do for our kids.
Thank you. And that concludes our public speaking, public comment section of the board meeting. We did have two written comments that have been posted to the agenda and uploaded to our website for, if anyone wants to go and review those. We are now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Move the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're now at the consent agenda. Dr. Oakley.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items: Approval of June 2023 Meeting Minutes, the Personnel Action Report, the 2223 Budget Amendments and Transfers Report, the Contractual Agreement with Modular Technologies Incorporated for the Purchase of Mobile Classrooms at Gibsonville Elementary School, the Contractual Agreement with Superior Mechanical Solutions for the Smith High School Boiler Replacement Project, the Recommendation to Use the Construction Management at Risk as the Project Delivery Method for 12 Capital Improvement Projects, and Mental Health Services Contracts. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Move the consent agenda.
Second. All right, Diane? Chrissy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. That passes unanimously by a vote of eight to zero. We're now at reports from the chair. So good evening. Summer meal distribution continues Monday through Thursday, each week through August 17th. Be sure to check out our data dashboard that shows school and satellite meal distribution locations, which can be found at www.gcsnc.com/summermeals. A reminder to parents of our incoming kindergarteners, 7th and 12th graders, that specific vaccinations are required for each of these groups before the start of the school year this fall. The Guilford County Health Department will offer clinics on July 19th, July 24th, and 26th to help parents meet this need. For more information and to schedule an appointment, call 336-641-3245. The elementary school supply list is now posted. The list can be found on the homepage of our website under Quick Links and is available in multiple languages. Supply lists for middle and high school will be provided by each school. Keep checking our website at www.gcsnc.com for more back-to-school updates and information. If your child is five years old or will be by August 31st, he or she should be enrolled in kindergarten. Registration takes place online at gcsnc.schoomint.net. The first day of school for those on the traditional calendar is Monday, August 28th. And congratulations to Stephen Bell, the Coordinator of American Indian Education, who has been named to the North Carolina Advisory Council on Indian Education. We are very proud of Stephen and the work he does in Guilford County with our Native American students. And finally, if you are in downtown Greensboro, take note of the new artwork on the Signal Boxes. Ten Guilford County School students from seven of our schools have their original work featured on the boxes. You can also view a video showcasing the artwork on GCS TV and on our YouTube channel. Thank you, and this concludes my remarks. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening. In late June, principals, assistant principals, and district leaders came together to reflect on our district's progress and spent time planning for the upcoming school year. We engaged in rich conversations, heard from outstanding speakers, including a very insightful panel of GCS students. We wrapped up the week with excellent student performances from the students at Southwest High and Ragsdale High, and I look forward to the work we will continue to do together as a team. Just last week, Guilford County Schools received the Advancing Excellence and Equity Award in Urban Education Curriculum Leadership from the Council of Great City Schools for collaborative efforts to improve student achievement. Chief Academic Officer Juice Marmanus and Chief Accountability Officer Sonia Stevens and members of their teams accepted the award, which recognized the district's nationally-recognized learning hubs, high-dose tutoring, and other academic recovery programs. Summer learning is ongoing, and our programs are being recognized on the state level. A story by the News and Record about our Emergency Medical Technician Program was featured in the North Carolina Public Schools Top 10 List for the week of July 6th. You can also find more stories about our summer camps and programs on our YouTube and social media channels. Speaking of summer learning, we want to see what students are reading this summer. Share your photos on social media and send them to goodnews@gcsnc.com. Students, don't forget to track your reading minutes to receive a free ticket to a Kersey Valley attraction this fall. This year, it's easier than it ever has been to fill out required paperwork at the start of the school year. Forms can be filled out directly through the Power School Parent Portal, and you can also update your contact information directly through Power School. If your phone number or your email address has changed, or you want to receive text messages from us, please visit the parent portal to make those updates before the start of the school year. The names Frank and Nancy Brenner are familiar to many of us, and they have long been champions of children in our community. The family's philanthropy continued this week when Frank made a very generous gift to GCS in honor of his wife's recent birthday. This $11,800 gift will be used to help erase student meal debt for the upcoming 2324 school year. I would like to personally thank the Brenners for this donation, and I continue to be moved by the generosity of this community to meet the most basic needs of our students and do love the way that creative supporters find to share with us. That concludes my remarks, and I'll now invite Mr. Ritchie to join us for a brief school safety update.
Welcome.
Good evening. So tonight's presentation will cover the safety improvements that GCS has made over the last year and update the board on some of our continuing projects. As y'all know, school safety is a top priority for GCS, having been elevated to a key component in the district's four strategic direction priorities. Over the last year, we've made a number of changes, and this last year, we deployed 12 new safety strategies, including the expansion of School Safety Office. And I'm going to embarrass him and point out our new Safety and Security Director, James Moore, in the back room. If you haven't met him, please meet him tonight. Thank you. That's perfect. The expansion will allow each principal supervisor to have a school safety specialist on their support team. Each specialist will be responsible for specific schools, allowing them to build stronger relationships with the principals and schools. Over the last year, through Student Services, district staff received new anti-bullying training and reporting procedures that y'all heard about last month. We've trained on various topics throughout that year, including the anti-bullying training, suicide and threat prevention training, and parental disturbances and custody issues, just to name a few. Would also like to point out that the student leadership was, throughout the district, was consulted about school safety in two in-person half-day sessions, one in the fall and one in the spring. We'll get into some project updates now. So over the last year, we converted 41 schools to a new video management system, which upgraded over 1,800 cameras, 1,840 cameras, with an advanced technology. The board also approved last month a contract to update or add more than 7,500 cameras or views to the schools this year. I'm happy to add that we have conducted our site surveys for our first five installations. That's Page High, High Point Andrews, Northwest High School, Southern High School, and the academy at Smith over the last two weeks. And I'm even happier to say that KNC Technologies began cabling at two of those sites today, this afternoon. So that's, that's great news. We've also updated 589 cameras on our yellow school buses over the last year, which outfits all of our school, yellow school buses with cameras. We've completed the installation of the emergency responder radio communication systems at 20 schools at this point. We will continue to make these installations throughout the summer at the remaining critical needs schools. And then there's a few schools that can use enhancement but aren't critical, that we will address with deferred maintenance funds over the coming years to make sure that every school has the best radio system for our emergency responders. And for, a reminder for those of y'all who are here, that is a system that will allow all emergency responders in our county, whether it is, whether it's deputies, police officers, firemen, or EMS workers, to be able to communicate outside of our schools and do so effectively to help ensure that our schools get the best response and are the safest possible. Our Evolve's security scanners. So last year, we installed Evolve's security scanners at all comprehensive high schools for their use in screening during school arrival and athletic events. This summer, GCS is adding screeners to our middle schools. These will be up and active on the first day of school. Last year, we launched a new tool from the Crisis Go app, in which students can report anonymous tips and other safety concerns and even self-harm concerns. The app is on all district computers for staff and 4th through 12th grade students. The link will also be found on the School Safety and Emergency Management website for families' use. I also want to remind everyone that if you see something, say something. This is the time to remind. Event Safety and Security. This past year, GCS implemented an event safety and security protocol district-wide that included implementing a clearbag policy, utilizing screeners at major high school events, and a staffing model for safety at these events. The district also provided staffing incentives for teachers. The district also provided staffing incentives for teachers and staff to be paid for working games and events. This program will continue during the 23-24 school year. I'll talk a little bit about relationships with other agencies. So we've created several standing staff meetings. The district hosted various meetings with law enforcement and emergency management partners to prepare for an active assailant exercise in the fall. Dr. Oakley and senior leadership began to convene regular meetings with chiefs of the local law enforcement agencies. Lastly, we've established an internal school safety working group to enhance collaborations and problem-solving between schools, safety, and communications teams. That is a weekly meeting. Over the last few months, we have revised our emergency operations plan. This includes incident protocols, notifications, and communications. We will continue to review and update individual plans for weather event safety and crisis communications over the next several months. Over the coming year, we will continue to provide training to principals and staffs on timely safety concerns. Want to introduce a little bit about the upcoming deferred maintenance from the 2022 bond. During the joint facilities meeting next week, we will be discussing our deferred maintenance requests. Our three priority needs are enhanced vestibules in our schools, updated classroom door locks, and stadium security upgrades. The stadium security will be an upgrade in alignment with the high school athletics renovations in the facility's master plan. And that concludes the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions and discuss anything further.
Thank you, Chief. Linda?
First, I want to say thank you to your team for making security a major priority and making the progress that you have made. So I'm understanding that, I don't know exactly our target date for getting all our cameras in our schools to digital, well-working. I know we have analog, but digital's 100% better, and I know that we have that the principals can see on their phones and stuff with the digital. So I don't know what our target date for doing that, but I think that's huge. I appreciate you getting all the buses with cameras. That just gives us a little check and balance, and you know, when people know that there's cameras on the bus, sometimes it's an incentive to, you know, better behavior. So I just want to say thank you. I think you guys are doing, truly making a high priority for security. And I know, hopefully, that makes our parents feel secure and that we're doing our very best to keep their children safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chrissy, and then Diane?
First of all, I want to echo what Linda said. You know, just thank you for everything that you're doing with your team to prioritize the safety of our students. I think that is so very, very important. I just wondered if you could speak to us a little bit about the pilot that we've done this past year with the security screeners at the high schools and speak to its effectiveness. And I don't know how much you can and can't say, but you know, has there been anything, any incidents prevented through the use of those scanners? Have they done their job and identified any potential risks? And then also, do you see any impediments to implementing those scanners in the middle schools as we move forward?
I'll start with the first, and I don't really see any impediments in moving forward. So we'll go backwards on the question. It's just a learning process, and it's a cultural change for our students to learn how to go through the scanners, how to do that on a regular basis, and for our staff to learn how to operate them. But that's not an impediment, it's just learning. So there's always that curve. The first few weeks of school, we ask parents to be patient with us, that it'll be a little slower, but it picks up, and the kids, quite frankly, the kids learn it faster than we do, and they'll understand what to do and how to do it, and it'll go well within the first two to three weeks of school. So as far as preventing, obviously, we never know truly if we've prevented anything, but last year, four firearms were recovered in Guilford County schools. The previous year, there were eight. So it's a small sample size, so I can't say statistically that it's significant. But I will tell you that of the four weapons found, firearms found on campus, two were found by the use of the scanner and were found at the scanner. The additional two, one never made it into the school itself. The individual was stopped before they got into the school by very alert staff who talked to them about something else and then located the gun as a result. And then the third person was let into the school at a door where there wasn't a scanner. That's where the final gun. But there was, again, an alert staff member who's, because we had noticed that some children tried to come in, was making the morning rounds as prescribed by the principal at that school and located that child and stopped him before the gun made it into any classroom or any school. So that is a difference from the previous year, where we had several guns found in actual classrooms, and was the impetus for moving forward with the Evolve in the first place. So I would say that's a positive report. Again, eight to four, I just can't say is significant, is, you know, it's not academically significant.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your commitment to safety, absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, followed by Deborah, and Bill.
Okay, will there be, I know that you have the system that calls parents or contacts parents. Will there be like a do and don't kind of thing, just to remind parents? I mean, I know that that list could be long, but kind of a short version of it to just remind parents, because it's the beginning of school, and you know, everybody's excited about coming back to school. I mean, is there, or are there some do's and don'ts specifically that you would want parents and students to know, don't do or to do?
So, I mean, yeah.
In terms of security?
Yeah, and they listen to those when the principal does the call, not us. And so we've given principals words and language, and we'll continue to have like the opening of schools toolkit and the open house checklist, and it'll be included in all of those pieces. But they want to hear that directly from their school, not that the whole district is doing this at X number of middle schools. And what Mr. Ritchie said is right, just in terms of the beginning of school year procedures. You have to touch it with people like eight to 12 times before, you know, it sinks in. So we won't just do that this summer, but we'll have to continue to do it throughout the fall, the spring, and the remainder of the school year.
And then my second question has to do with security at small events, smaller athletic events like volleyball. You know, I know that that doesn't, you know, reach the scale of a football game, but you know, our girls playing volleyball is very important, and their safety is very important. And so I was just wondering, I think when we discussed it before, you were more focused on the big events.
Yes, ma'am. And when it comes to the scanners, we are more focused on moving to the big events, because that's where most items have happened. But that doesn't mean that we ignore the security at the small events, just means the screeners are typically not used. And so at those events, they are all staffed by administrators and staff members, and that's part of the staffing incentive pay as well, which has really been a very popular thing with our schools and our teachers, to get them to the games to help out. And that's how we utilize that. And so it's a much more, it's, the numbers are numerically, they're just so much smaller that the individual contact, which is actually, and you know better than I do, is actually even more preventive in nature, that individual contact is what makes the difference. Now, there were two volleyball games that we did use the scanners at last year, because they did rise to the level of, we have several schools where volleyball is extremely, and I'm using that as an example, but there are other sports too, like wrestling at Northwest, right? We have schools that have the smaller sports that are very popular, and we will bring them forward at that. But this year, that's one of the things we are going to review, because one of the things that we have done with the Evolve scanners is that we have, they have created one that is now portable. We used to say that they're movable but not very portable, right? So it's a lot of work to get that. But as part of the plan for the middle schools, we were able to make it work to where we received 18 portable Evolve scanners. That's what are coming. And so the middle schools will get, the high school will get a high school scanner in replacement for the high schools getting the portable scanner that we can use at athletic events and start moving to even smaller events. So that's one of the things we will be reviewing in the fall, as the fall goes.
I'm going to put you on the spot.
Please.
Okay. What is the, if you can say, the perhaps number-one security thing that worries you as far as what we all should be concerned about, or is there one?
So there is one, and that one is us as trusted adults not paying attention to the signs that children are giving and not talking to the children. And I know that's not a physical piece, that's not, but quite frankly, it's the relationship piece that always worries me about this, because relationships drive teenagers. Good relationships, bad relationships, feeling left out, feeling included, all of that is something we as adults have to watch for, need to look for, and that's what concerns me the most, is that we have children that are being ignored, and we're not seeing the clues, and they're coming forward, and that is what worries me.
And then, I know you've got another month to work on this, but the traffic issues around some of our schools, I know it doesn't happen at all of them, but you know, I hope that you've already had conversations with our local municipal law enforcement to help us out with trying to deal with, you know, because we're going to get calls.
We are. And quite frankly, I'm not sure what we're going to do. It's going to be individual school to school. And I know that's the last thing you want to hear, but right now, our law enforcement agencies, as you know, so one full traffic unit, so the first two weeks of school, we have, one of our departments would put their entire traffic team out at our schools, and for two full weeks, they would be out at our schools during opening, specifically opening, but also some at closing. That particular agency has actually eliminated one half of their traffic contingent to be able to answer calls because they're that short-staffed. So that is going to be, that's going to be more difficult this time. So I'm sure that the traffic officers that are still remaining in that position will be working this, but that is going to be a real problem. One of the problems that we have had, we have three schools right now that we are currently working with DOT to complete traffic studies at, to see how we can make moves that will enhance the traffic patterns at the schools. Some, unfortunately, it means adding lots of driveway and taking away other space for that might or might not be practical, and that'll be a decision that will ultimately, I'm sure, appear before you on some of these schools. And then others, it's a matter of switching the directions one end to the other, and we have done that. We did that at two schools last year. We changed their traffic patterns completely. But we will continue to evaluate those traffic patterns. There's two schools that we are, actually have already asked them to look at new patterns for this year, and we're going to try them out on the first day. And those are the schools that we know are problematic. The problem is, is when changes in neighborhoods happen, there will be more that come problematic this year that weren't last year with the amount of growth we have in Guilford County. But we will work it. That's probably our number-one morning job during the first two weeks of school, that and making sure the scanners are working properly.
Well, is it your job or is it transportation's job to encourage more parents, if they choose, to let their kids ride on the school bus as opposed to?
So that's a trick question.
No, it's not meant to be. I mean, I'm trying to be realistic.
No, no, it is, I'm going to say this, and I'm probably going to get in trouble for it, but that's all of our job. Every one of us in this room, and transportation, and safety, and principals, we need to encourage the use of school buses. Our schools were designed for school bus transportation, a 65 to 35 ratio at both, meaning 65% should ride the bus, and our traffic, we should be able to handle 35% car riders and walkers. And last year, the majority of the schools that you have received complaints at have gone as high as 60% to 70% car ridership. And that is, that's what's the major stimulus behind this. So thank you for asking that question, because this is the perfect time to put it out there. Parents, our buses are safe. They have become even safer. Transportation Department handled the project on bus safety, and they did a terrific job with the cameras and with teaching their drivers what to do and proper actions. And we're, you know, we're further away from the pandemic than we have been, and safety-wise, both health-wise, let's ride the bus again. My child did. I asked that you let yours. It would help us all.
Is it too late? I think there was a deadline for signing up to ride the buses. Is it too late if a parent decided now?
It's ongoing. The very initial routes, you know, we had to pull from that deadline, but we can add students on. It's just to be guaranteed for the first day of school, it has passed, but we just ask for the window to be able, because every time we add and see who actually comes, it's a revolving project.
So you're okay if?
You can still fill out a transportation request form. It doesn't mean that your route and time is guaranteed on the first day of school. We will add them to the routes as we receive them and update those routes for the start of the school year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah, and then Bill.
Yep, and just to back that up, I've got two, one at elementary school, one at middle school, and they both do ride the bus. They hop right on there. The first grader, now second grader, I'm going to get in trouble for that one. She thinks it is the best thing ever. So I did have a question on page nine with the law enforcement and emergency management partners preparing for an active assailant exercise in the fall. Now, we do have the drills in school while the kids are there. Is this a multi-agency activity, and will this be conducted with kids in the school?
So it is a multi-agency activity, but there will not be kids. It will be on a teacher's workday.
Okay. Can you get this, can we say police, fire, EMS, who will be participating?
Yes, we can. So at this point, police, fire, EMS, and Sheriff's Department, both police agencies have committed to participate.
Okay, wonderful. And is this one of our school facilities that we're currently using or something that was?
Yes. So this will be at an actual school. I don't really want to get into the details for obvious reasons on this, but it is, it's a school that would have multi-agency response as its natural protocol. So with that, it really lends itself to a perfect, perfect spot.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, followed by Kim.
Yes, Mike, great job. Good job presenting. I know my colleagues and I all consider safety for schools, for the kids, to be extremely important, so these layering factors that you put on that you've described are terrific. Do we, I just have a question on page five. Emergency response radio, there are 21 schools that have it. Are there more schools that already had it, or is that the total?
No, so this is a new project that was started, and we were funded by the county commissioners approximately a year, year and a half ago. And so with that, we found in the district that there were greater than 40 schools with critical needs in radio infrastructure. Basically, the schools being made with concrete, thick glass, lots of steel, radio transmissions don't go well through them. And so we looked at that, we were asked to look at that, and we did, and we found that some of our schools needed enhancements. So with this current project, we will be able to get every schools, every school with critical needs with this, it's called a biodigital amplifier or an emergency radio communication system. Every school that has critical needs will be able to be outfitted with one of these this summer from the funds provided, which is terrific. There are some schools in our new schools that could utilize some additional, I guess boosting would be the best way of putting it, of the radio signal. It's not critical, but at the same time, it could be much better, and so we want to make it much better. In those schools, we will meet those needs with, through the deferred maintenance funds that are coming up.
Okay, second question, because we just see this, which is terrific. But are there best practices that you can point to that other school systems are doing that you would love to do that they're doing?
So right now, I would say we have a great relationship with Winston-Salem Forsyth County and with Durham County and with Charlotte Mecklenburg. So we actually, as leaders in this, we discuss things on a regular basis, and have been working with that. And I'll say that we're actually in the throes of putting those things in place already if they're not in place. And so I feel really good about where we're headed. There are definite enhancements that we will always do, because we want to be safer tomorrow than we were today, every tomorrow. So with that, we're going to continue to improve, but at this point, we are putting those best practices in place.
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I was just wondering whether or not with the new bills that we're doing, is there a way that we can eliminate the need to have Evolve? way that we can eliminate the need to have evolve as a continued cost to the district? Because it's obvious that the more that they upgrade, the more we're going to have to end up paying. So I don't know what we're doing and figuring out a way, what we're doing to build with those safety things already in place. Is that an idea?
Yes, so, so the safety issues are in place, but at this point, there is nothing that can be built in that is a metal detector that will allow the lines and the flow through that Evolve provides for us.
Okay.
But, but all of the safety factors, in fact, under deferred maintenance, at our, we're trying to catch our current schools up to the safety factors we're building into our new ones.
Right. What kind of message are we sending for students? Because we know that the hardening of schools, right, does not guarantee some of the things that we think. It's, it is about those relationships. So I'm trying to understand what are we doing in building those practices that are needed with our student populations? Because I'm a believer that students keep each other safe in regard, in the school culture and all of those things.
Right. So, so agreed. And so the student safety committee that I described earlier, it's actually the student leadership for most of our high schools and several middle schools are brought, were brought together last year twice. And the idea is that we will continue to bring them through over this next year again. And what we do is we set down, one was based solely on mental health and what their needs of their peers and, and they came forth and they provided amazing information for us in how we can address going forward, some of our mental health needs. And that has helped us with focusing that. In the spring, we, or in the fall, we focus, I'm getting which one was which, but at the other one, we focus solely on safety issues and what is working from their opinion and what is not working. And we got some answers that we didn't necessarily want to hear, right? Because they were honest with us. But that allowed us to go in and look at procedures and look at policies and, and help moving that forward. But again, the number one message, the, the best messaging we have going forward is when the principal makes that call to the, the family to get that first message starting at the beginning of school, like we discussed earlier through Connect Ed and then through the continuing involvement of the principals and staff in that student's life and making that day-to-day contact. So one of the things that the Evolve does, and I can give a couple of examples of schools, I won't take up your time, but if you'd like to hear them afterwards, where the schools really do take the saying hello, it all starts with hello, and really take that seriously with the scanners. And when you go watch the scanners, if you're there for more than five minutes, you no longer watch the procedures of the scanners, you're watching the interaction of the staff with the students and them checking in every morning. And it's subtle, but it is effective and it's purposeful. And our schools that do this best are really make paving ways there. And that is the message that I would say is still the number one we need to send, no matter how hardened our schools are, no matter how much physical security we put in place, is it will never replace that relationship and we've got to stress that. And so getting that message just repeated over and over again, it will build the confidence of our students and the staff, quite frankly.
Do you think that with all of this, that it does prevent students from sharing more? Like the more they see the hardening of their schools, do you think that it's actually a barrier, creating a different kind of barrier for students and being more open about anything?
So, so I really don't. I think that, that students are as complex as adults and they have the, as many reactions as we do to this. So I think certainly, there are probably some that it provides a barrier, but there are others where it provides an opening. And either way, it gives us a baseline to see what that common behavior is. Because one of the commonalities in tragic events is that the behavior of that person was noticeably changed leading up to that event. So whether it's someone is shut off or someone is, is wide open, seeing that change is how we're going to be able to observe. And that goes back to the earlier points of that relationship is where we build that. But honestly, Superintendent Oakley used a great analogy about it. It takes eight to 12 times of actually touching something to become used to it. Well, it's the same thing. Repetition, if we're doing it in a sincere way, breaks down those barriers, that constant, that, that really showing that constant concern. And that's one thing that I've learned in my two years with Guilford County Schools is no matter how frustrated we can all get at any job, the staff cares and they do their best to show it regularly. And that's what we need to continue to support.
And my last question is, have we improved on the scripts that we send out? Because I know last year, parents were not happy about the principal calls, they said this, and then my kid came home and they said that. So how are we improving that communication?
So the communications team here, with everything that we go into, puts together that script and does a terrific job with it. What we've learned again is some prints, some parents aren't happy with A, some parents aren't happy with B. I don't honestly think we'll ever get everyone happy, but what we're trying to do is, is provide the most information we can to avoid, to, to make sure that they understand that we're safe, to give the information we can be transparency, transparent with, because there's some information we just can't share. And then to tell, to make sure that they understand their children are safe when they are. And if they aren't safe, we will say that as well. And luckily, we haven't had to say that. And let's knock on wood that we don't.
I'll just add to like this whole after action debrief. I think I know what you're talking about. And that one had to do with timing, right? And, and so the taking the time to have the follow-up review is something that we've taken very seriously, especially around safety. What happened? What, what happened at what time and how can we prevent this moving forward, particularly schools with shared campuses? And so I think to your point, when there could have been an improvement, saying it, naming it and writing it down in the protocol is how we have to hold accountability. But no two situations are going to be the same. That one was communication and timing. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, Chief. I appreciate the update and I, I was at a student discipline hearing, I think last year and the, the student that was, was in trouble literally said that, you know, that it, you know, in elementary school, you know, that, you know, he'd get on, a pat on the back and a hello and, and things were really different in middle school. I know there were some other things that were going on, but I think that, you know, just that relationship and that affirmation goes a long way. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are now at action items and we have a number of things. The first two things are the closure of the Middle College at Bennett. As you remember, on June 13th, the superintendent gave a very detailed report, report for the recommendation for the closure. There was a hearing on June 22nd and today we are here to vote on that recommendation. So is there a motion? And this one is for the closure of the Middle College at Bennett.
Move the item.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously, eight to zero. Item B is the closure of Peeler Open Elementary School. Same scenario, on June 13th, there was, the superintendent gave details around the rationale for the closing of that school on June 22nd. There was a hearing. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, go ahead.
And it just has to do with the name and I'll bring this up again, that we, we have, I think, a responsibility to preserve the name of Silas Peeler as well as Mr. Hampton, as far as Hampton and Peeler are concerned. So I'm going to keep putting that out there for us to remember that so that the name Peeler just doesn't go away because we closed the school. Because he was actually, if I recall, actually a principal here too. So, thank you.
All right, we are now at policy 7100. Item C, Diane, I'll turn to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Tonight, we are considering seven policy items that were reviewed by the Policy Committee in May and were published for a public comment from June the 13th through July the 13th. Members of the public who had an opportunity to review the revisions and were asked to do so by tonight or, or by the 13th, which is when it's policy, whenever they had the opportunity to make comments. For item, the C, I make a motion to adopt the revisions for policy 7100, recruitment and selection of personnel as presented. The background for this is that the purpose of this revision is to update the policy code to align to the North Carolina Schools, School Boards Association code, coding system and to update the contents to conform to state law, which requires fingerprinting of employees who work with children enrolled in pre, pre-kindergarten. The title of this policy has changed and the content reorganized, consolidating a few of the policies into one. There were no comments for this particular, during the comment period.
Thank you, is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes by a vote of seven to one. Item D.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt the revision of policy 7101, equal opportunity employment as presented. The background for this is the recommendation, the recommended revisions changes the title of policy 7101 to better align with the NCSBA code, coding system. The equal opportunity employment content has, has moved from policy 7100 and reflects only minor updates to align to other board policies relating to equal opportunity. Content regarding, reporting alleged violations of the law have been moved to policy 7301. There were no comments during the comment period.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes by a vote of 71, seven to one. Item F, I mean, I'm sorry, item E.
Okay, I make a motion to repeal policy 7102, recruitment selection of licensed employees as presented. The background for this is that the content of this policy has been merged to policy 7100. There were no comments during the comment period.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes by a vote of seven to one. Item, are we on item F?
F. I make a motion to repeal policy 7103, employment of, of relatives as presented. The background for this is the content of this policy has been merged into policy 7100. There were no public comments on this item.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes by a vote of seven to one. Item G.
Make a motion to adopt the new policy 7120, employee health certificate. The background for this is that the new policy reflects the requirements of state law regarding employee health certificates. The policy reflects the current practice of GCS. There, there was one comment that was received and is attached to the agenda and it was responded to.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Can I make a comment about it?
Sure.
Very quickly. I, I'm voting for this, but I just wanted to state, I don't love this policy. I understand that it's to align with North Carolina state law, but I do think this might be an opportunity for GCS to be able to work with some of the healthcare partners that we have to help provide teacher, incoming teachers with any of the screenings that they need to have before being able to be employed. I read the public comments about this and I did agree with some of the concerns that people had, especially if you have people who are new to the district coming in and don't maybe have a doctor yet, don't know where to go. We wouldn't want to prevent them from being able to be employed. So if we could work with some of the systems that we already have partnerships with, it might be helpful. So, thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, I, we, I checked with Dr. Kay on this and we already provide for any, we, we take the cost of, of whatever is the exam and all that, is that right, Dr. Morrison?
Can you turn the mic on, Dr. Morrison?
We cover the cost on classified employees and we have an agency that we work with, that we send them to for those exams.
Thank you, so there was a second to that. My numbers in my notebook are not adding up to the numbers on the agenda. So this is policy 7120 as indicated there. All right, all those in, there was a second to that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes by a vote of seven to one. We are now at policy 7130.
Seven 301.
7130.
7130. Are we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the revisions to policy 7130 licensure as presented. The background for this is this revision refreshes the language of the policy and aligns to the NCSBA model. There were no comments during the comment period.
Thank you, is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? That passes by a vote of seven to one. Policy 7301.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt the revisions of policy 7301, staff responsibility as presented. The background for this, the recommended revision changes the title of policy 7301 to better align with the North, North Carolina School Board Association coding system and to, and to both ethic, ethics and reporting requirements. The new content in this policy has been revised to refer to nepotism and conflict of interest requirements in policy 7100 and 7730 and to clarify how an employee should report alleged violations of employee code of ethics. Content has also been moved from policy 7101 regarding reporting of alleged violations of law. There were no comments on this policy change.
Thank you, is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes by a vote of seven to one. I will now turn to Board Member Deborah Napper for a motion.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, but don't we need to add?
We're getting ready to.
Oh, that's it? Okay. Thank you.
You told me.
I move that we amend the agenda to consider real estate and personnel matters.
Second. Thank you. And Diane, I'll turn to you for both of those. Oh, sorry. All those in favor of the amendment to amend the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes by a vote of eight to zero. So you have personnel and real estate. You have personnel and real estate.
Oh, I do. Oh, okay. Which one you want me to do first?
Either one. You can do real estate first.
Yeah, I am. I'm just trying to find my, my personnel notes, okay? I move that the board authorize staff and our attorneys to finalize the acquisition of real estate, estate for the construction of the Catherine G. Johnson K through H school site on three adjoining parcels for a total of 27.743 acres, more or less, along South Bunker Hill Road in the south, in southwest Guilford County for a total estimated acquisition price of $2,543,600. Such property more particularly described in the acquisition agreement attached to the minutes of this meeting, subject expressly to the approval of the price to be paid for the property by the Guilford County Board of Commissioners as required by NCGS 115C-426 parentheses F. Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes by a vote of six to two. And now personnel.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make an addendum to the personnel report for administrative appointments for principals.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say, oh, let me turn over. All those in favor say, oh, let me turn over, well, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, that passes by a vote of seven to one. Now I'll turn over to you, Dr. Oakley.
It's my pleasure to announce Elizabeth Calacut, Principal of Allen J. Elementary, Jonathan Moore, Principal of Southern Elementary, and Keith Barnett as Principal of Western High School.
All right, well, congratulations and thank you. We're now at Board Member Comments, and I will start with you, Deborah.
I hope everyone is having a wonderful and safe summer. Please, please, please be mindful of the heat, especially with your little ones, because it is miserable out there. It's more like swimming in soup than it is walking in air. I would like to extend my thanks to everyone working at the Summer Arts Institute this summer. My upcoming second grader is in one of the camps this week. She's having a blast. They have all manner of arts and programs going on, and they're providing breakfast and lunch for the students. I don't know if there are still spaces available, but you can always waitlist if you still want to slide your kiddo in, and they have a great time, and maybe you can get picked up for camp still. Other than that, I just hope everybody's, like I said, having a good summer. And I don't know about all the rest of you, parents and teachers, but the, the school supplies are already in Target and Walmart, and I'm not ready for this.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. I'd like to report that I visited Claxton Construction Site this week, and it's, the steel's up, the concrete's down. They're gonna make the schedule. I think it's gonna be next fall, be ready to go. And they, a big question I had for them, they have all the supplies? And they said, yeah, they have, most of the supplies are already stored in the warehouse. So they are ready to go, so just to report that.
Thank you, Kim.
Yes, I just want to share that the Greater Guilford Food Finder app has been created for those that you may be looking for different places where you can secure other food. There is definitely, some pantries are running low, so those of you that would like to donate to some of our local pantries, they are definitely in need. And congrats to Stephen Bell again for his opportunity to serve on the state level, and to our district, of course, with the Council of Great City Schools that's doing great work, and that recognition. The One High Point Commission Public Hearing is scheduled for Thursday, July 27th, at 6:30, at the City of High Point Chambers, city chambers as well. So I hope everyone is enjoying this summer. I am definitely enjoying my summer, and making sure that I get plenty of vitamin D, and get out there, and try to get some exercise in as well, and drink plenty of water. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Diane.
First of all, I just want to thank our staff who are working for summer school, because some people think that graduation is the end of our school year, and then they don't realize that we're, we're three hundred and sixty-five days, twenty-four seven. So, you know, I really want to thank folks who are working during the summer to help our students be all that they can be. And I think Dr. Oakley said something about reading, and I really hope that our students are reading. Recently, my grandson went on a road trip with, well, he had to read because he had three very senior women in the car with him and, and his dad. So I asked him, what was he gonna do? And he had his tablet, and he says, I'm, I'm reading. So he, he didn't listen to our conversation, I hope. So he was reading. I want to thank for, thank the couple that gave us the donation, because I was gonna mention, since Ms. Jenkins, Jenkins was not here tonight, so that nobody forgets about her lunches, that we, we need to go ahead and start planning for the next school year. And I assume we, we left on a zero balance? Okay. So, so thank you to everybody who helped us to have a zero balance for the previous school year, but, you know, feeding our children is, is gonna be an ongoing, because we're feeding children this summer. So we, we need to be aware that that's not something that takes a holiday either, as far as trying to provide food and lunches. On the matter of employment, you know, I, I really want to encourage people, you know, on my Facebook page, I get folks saying they're looking for a job. And so, Dr. Morrison, I put GCS's website up there. I don't know if they qualify or whatever, but at least I want people to know that we are, we are open for employment. Is that correct? Okay. So, I mean, and there are other jobs other than being a teacher, and there are other jobs than being a bus driver. There, you know, so I hope people would consider us as a good employer. And though we might not have the best salary in the world, we, you know, at least you get a paycheck, and, and you will be appreciated, and it's rewarding work. So I hope that folks who are still looking for employment will look at GCS. And then I also want to congratulate our retirees, because I think before we have our next board meeting, you'll be doing the recognition of retirees for Guilford County Schools. I'm always amazed when I go how many years of service that people have, you know, I mean, you have people who've stayed here for thirty, forty years, and that's a lot to give to, you know, this particular occupation. So I just want to congratulate them. And then the High Point, the Greater High Point Partnership will be having its exception, extraordinary educators luncheon on Wednesday, August the 16th. And so if you're interested, please get in touch with Don Spencer. There are scholarships available. But this is High Point's opportunity to recognize teachers and educators in our, I think it's thirty-three High Point Schools. And the Margaret Arbuckle Award this year is gonna go to Dr. Frank Thomas. So if you're interested, we'd appreciate you coming. And I just want to, you know, I don't know if y'all have noticed, but there has been a, a real mood shift as far as staff is concerned, in a good way. And I just want to say thank you for hanging in there, and thank you for, you know, looking beyond an individual person and looking at what your job requirements have been. And I'm glad to see people smiling, you know, because a lot of folks come to work and they hate their jobs, and I don't get that impression from you. And that goes from, like I said, I still don't know what you're smiling about, but, but maybe you'll tell me the secret. But I appreciate, because, because we, we're under siege in a lot of different ways, and, you know, we, we give it our best, but sometimes people don't see it that way. But I'm just glad to see a different mood shift as far as coming into the school, into this building and other buildings, and that people seem to have smiles. So I hope you'll be smiling on August 28th, when we start school back, but I think that, you know, thumbs up to the fact that that leadership does make a difference. Thank you.
And actually, what I wanted to say piggybacks pretty nicely right on top of that, which is that there are a lot of really, really positive things happening behind the scenes that the general public doesn't see until they get to this moment here at the board. You know, we heard about a bunch of the safety updates tonight. Those things have been in motion for months and months and months, and there is a lot that is happening across GCS that I think is really going to help positively impact our schools, and most importantly, to me, the academic performance of our kids, because that's what we're here for, is to help our kids succeed. And I think a lot of people are working very hard, under the leadership of you, Dr. Oakley, to really recommit to our students and recommit to the school system, and try to make this the best place that it can possibly be for our kids. It's kind of hard to believe, but by the next time we have a board meeting, we'll have some kids who have been back in school for two weeks. I know my son goes to one of the middle colleges. He goes back August 3rd. I can't even believe that we're that close. So, you know, enjoy what you have left of summer. Teachers, administrators, all the school staff who worked so hard to prepare school buildings for that first opening day of school, you know, we thank you in advance for all of the hard work that you're doing. And, you know, I know that excitement and anticipation that builds up before that first day of school, and I know people are getting, you know, very excited about that. And parents certainly are getting excited about it as well. And I look forward to being able to get out to as many back-to-school nights and open houses as possible as we get back into this crazy season, so, thanks.
Did you have to shock me?
I know.
Wow. I know. There again, we do have a lot of students in our building getting that extra boost, which, and we appreciate all our staff and our teachers who are dedicated to getting our students where they need and ready for the, too early in August to go back to school. But we do appreciate you. We know that you guys are all working, and we do appreciate you. I had the pleasure. Physical exercise keeps us physically fit and mentally strong. And I had the honor to go to Eastern Guilford High School, where the Kyle Ripken Senior Foundation and the United Healthcare came in, in a couple of days, and redid their whole weight room, gave them, they also did their locker room, and it was amazing. And these kids were excited. There again, I'm a firm believer in exercise. I'm still playing tennis at a ripe age. I'll just say that. Okay. So, but, you know, it keeps us mentally strong and physically fit, and that can set your whole attitude for the day. So I really appreciate them that came in in 2017 and did it for Smith High School and Andrews. So Kyle Ripken Senior Foundation and United Healthcare, I'm asking you to continue that great work. I think it's a very positive thing, so we appreciate it, and I hope you come back to see us.
Well, I want to echo Board Member Bellamy Small, who reminds us that summer is not, in fact, vacation for educators and for educational leaders. We know here that educators are still planning and administering and teaching and prepping and encouraging, and they're still holding their students in their hearts. Reflective of that, I want to shout out Mr. Maltby, the exceptional music and choral teacher of Swan Middle School. In May, Mr. Maltby was Guilford County Schools recipient of the Debbie Reynolds Award. That goes to an educator, counselor, or staff member who actively and resolutely advocates for the needs of children. And among those for whom he resolutely advocates, I happen to know one rising sixth grader who can hardly think about anything else, other than all of the changes that are about to come in her life, as her world is just turned upside down. But one of the most reassuring presences has been a teacher in whose classroom she has yet to sit over the course of a summer vacation, and whom she has only known from afar, who amidst these months of summer is thinking about how to help students ease into transition, how to set them up for success and for confidence. And after a recent reach out and learning about plans for a rising sixth grader hangout that Mr. Maltby was organizing, my daughter steeled herself and said, you know, bring it on, middle school. And so thanks to all of our teachers, our administrators, our educators, thanks to all of you, and thanks to Mr. Maltby, to whom I say, Della is excited for chorus.
I'd like to thank Crystal Black for inviting me out to Rankin Elementary School this morning to be a reader. The kids didn't give me anything. I had to work super hard. They were like a tough crowd. I felt like I was being interviewed or evaluated. I was, so I've had to be on my toes for that crew. I had to earn every hug and smile and, and all of that, but it was really, really great. Also want to recognize Smith High School, the alumni. They had a tailgate and community drive, wanting to, you know, just be present and respond to some of the things that are happening in the community, and it was really successful. Two of my favorite Smith alumni, Jeff Crosby and Quentin Jackson. I said, two of my favorite, not all of my favorite, because everybody's gonna text me in a minute. But, but it was wonderful, and I saw a lot of them out later that evening. And August 1st is National Night Out. You know, National Night Out is decades old, and communities across the country, and many, many here in Greensboro, will be having all kinds of events and activities. Our neighborhood is doing Night Out for Safety and Liberation. It's, it's something that was adopted by the Ella Baker Center, and we will have a block party. We've invited our first responders out. Guilford County Immunization is gonna be there, because I think in my comments mentioned how important that is. I don't know how many kids miss a few days of school because they don't have those. So certainly make sure that you remind people of that, and if you want to give them access to the immunization mobile unit, please let me know, and I'll tell you where it's at. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So much.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you very much, Board Members, Superintendent, and all of you that have stayed here.